This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the February 8th, 2022 Tenano City Council Work Session. On tonight's work session agenda, we have a presentation from Public Works Director Troy Cannon on our annual water report. So with that said, I'll turn the work session over to Troy and he can start the discussion. Sir?
Well, thank you, Wayne. Good evening, everybody. Does everybody have a copy of that in front of them? No? Yes?
Jen's pulling it up right now on the screen in front of everyone. Trying to.
Uh oh. Well, if we don't, that's gonna... I can just run some numbers off to you guys and...
It's on there, right, Jen?
You might have to do that. I don't see it. I'm...
Uh oh.
I added it today, too. I swear.
Okay, so do you want to just do it later, Wayne? So they can see the numbers? Or you just want me to do like a brief? What we produced for the year? Water loss, ERUs. How about if I just do that, Wayne?
Let's... Is it... Are we sure that it didn't upload onto the agenda, Jen? Turn your microphone on.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking right now. I'm on my computer and I don't see it either.
I don't see it either.
Well, that's our fault.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So do you want me to just do one that we can do again next month? We can do this one and the Six Year Street Plan? That way it's together or what? I mean, there's five pages here. I can go through five pages of stuff and you guys are not looking at it either.
I feel really bad right now and I'm gonna say, because Troy got ahold of me earlier and he was like, hey, I might not make it to the meeting tonight. And I was like, well, well, I told everyone that you were gonna be there tonight and you were really proud of your water report. And then he gives me a picture of his toes when he was getting a pedicure.
Thanks, Wayne.
And he was getting a pedicure. And he's like, well, I might not make it because I'm getting a pedicure. And I was like, no, you need to make it because this is your big night to shine. And then, uh, now, so you probably could have got your nails done in addition to your toes if I wouldn't have given you a hard time. So I apologize, Troy.
Yeah, honestly, too, down at the Eagles, they have the drawing tonight. And I was really looking forward to going down there and try to win $11,000 on the drawing.
Well, go down there.
So anyway, I missed that out, too. Whatever.
$11,000 for what?
That's what the... They have a, what is it, raffle or cards? Yeah, cards and raffles. So it's only one drawing a night, every Tuesday night.
Gambling permit.
Yeah, they probably have one, hopefully.
That's quite the prize. Okay.
Quite the jackpot, isn't it? Okay, so I'll just do you a little brief summary of what we did. So in 2021, we did 64 million gallons of water that we produced. We sold... Water sold was 53,425,000 gallons. So we had a lot, you know, a difference there of 10,700 million gallons of water that is unaccountable for, which I went through and looked at, you know, the fire department uses. So they did some... I remember last year, they did some hose testing and some other testing they did and some training, which probably wasn't metered. And so we have kind of a, you know, rough estimate what we do there. And I gave them 500,000 gallons, what I added to for the fire department for water loss. At leaks, I did with some meters that we found that were leaking on our side. We had some leaks throughout the year. I put like a million gallons of water loss there. I put some for broken or slow meters or meters that are not even in our system because there is some that are not in our system, which we need to figure out why. We did some line flushing. We fill up the backer truck. There's contractor use that uses the water. We flush and replace the calcite media tanks in the wells. We flush sewer lines and we do reservoir cleaning. So that total comes up to about 5,500,000 gallons. And so, excuse me, so we take the water produced versus water sold difference, which is 10,700,000 gallons, subtract the 5,500,000 gallons, and we get a total of 5,200 gallons. So then you divide that by our total produced water, which is 64,125,000 gallons. You get 0.081 times 100, it gives you 8.1% water loss. 10% is acceptable. So we're still under the range for DOH, which is good. We have... If you take our acre feet per gallons, we are permitted for 87,973 gallons and 830 gallons per year. And so you gotta do some math there, deduct what we produce to that. And it comes up with a... Basically, we're at 327 ERUs is what we are for the year.
That's what we're using.
No, that's what we still have left.
That's what we have. That's our banked capacity.
Correct, yes. And so that's based on one ERU is 200 gallons per day. And that's a household, basically, is what they go off of. So we have 327 ERUs for development. So we have some lots that are still not hooked up to water. I don't see any future things coming up next year, or maybe the year after might have some stuff. But we still have a pretty good bank without having to go look for water rights. And right now, that's gonna be hard to find because everyone's keeping them.
Yeah, you know, the one thing to look down the road is what happens with the Schuylkill Reservoir.
Yeah.
And we have 327 banked ERUs. What is our... How many ERUs are used?
I don't have that figured in front of me. I have to figure that out. But it would take me a minute, but I can give that to you later on, if that's fine. So yeah, I mean, we have 700 some odd services, I think it is, what we have now. So if we deducted the 60... Well, wait, we do 64. I'd have to divide 64 by whatever. Not a big deal. I'll do that later. It's gonna be quite a bit of math. But so, you know, we're still looking good that way. You know, if someone develops Lemon Hill, I mean, hopefully that will bring some water rights to us. I'm not sure. I haven't heard anything on that about if there was water rights or wasn't water rights in the last conversation a while ago. I didn't think the developer backed out because there wasn't, but...
Well, it was purchased.
You're correct, by someone else, yes.
Yeah, and they're still going through the legal loopholes of determining what water rights come with that property, what, you know, how the water rights were managed over the years by the previous owner, if they were maintained properly, what types of water rights they were. And it's, you know, to get that information from the Department of Ecology is difficult because it's not really a priority of theirs. And it's really expensive to pay an attorney to figure those things out. But the new owner is going through it. He's just not rushing to put a bunch of houses in. But he is trying to... He's trying to figure out what exactly is available for water so he can make a plan.
Yeah, right. I mean, is it premature if I say he might be looking at sewer stuff or, you know?
I mean, he called us to ask. And I told him to reach out to you to talk about...
Yeah, I talked to him, yeah.
Sewer service.
Right, we're coming up with a plan with the sewer and a water service out to his farm. So, which would be good. I mean, extending the sewer is always good. And that's future plans for maybe Miles Sand and Gravel for years down the road to develop that place. But also, we got to think about, too, our plant right now is, per day, we're about 90 to 100,000 gallons a day. Coming through that plant, we're permitted for 228,000. So, I mean, we're like 130,000 gallons shy of being tapped out, but you know...
And we're servicing our entire city at about 50%.
Right, so if you doubled our entire city, that we'd have capacity for that.
Yeah, which there... That's not gonna happen.
No, not at all.
Okay.
And plus, if we add in, what's that?
This all sounds very good. Thank you.
Yeah, no, okay. Yep, thanks, Wayne.
All right, thanks, Troy. Any questions for Troy regarding the water report?
Can we send copies to him so they can kind of look at it? Maybe get a better idea?
Yeah, we'll want to put it on the next agenda also, just so we can make sure that a public copy is like accessible on it. You know, we can put it on our website, too. And then you're gonna give a street report next meeting. And we'll also kind of rehash this out after folks spend some time to talk about it.
Right, and then we have Mike Marshall Gibson Olsen working on that grant that I told him about for Streets for Low-Income Cities. So I don't want... We don't want to talk about it now. We'll talk about it later.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right, I'll have some questions during your report, which we'll just pretty much do next. But does anybody have any questions for Troy regarding the water report? John?
No.
Okay. All right, that's it for the work session. So we can move right into staff reports. And we start with George, Chamber of Commerce. Mr. George Sharp. I know he's there. All right, maybe he'll hop on here in a minute. EDC would be George Sharp again. VCB, we had a kind of a listening session today that George and Jen or Jessica were actually at. Was anybody else there? If you guys want to brief on that. George, why don't you... There you are. Do you want to give a report on the Chamber, the EDC, and the VCB?
I'd be glad to, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
The Chamber is gonna have a meeting next Wednesday, and we have a great speaker coming. His name is Daryl Morrow. And he's gonna talk about COVID fatigue and then how to run your business in these uncertain times and how to come out of it. That's gonna be a 20 to 30-minute presentation during the lunchtime. And then he's gonna stay after from 1:15 to 2:15 to go into a deeper dive into that COVID fatigue, both mentally for you personally and how to run your business. So I think it's gonna be a great program. The Tenano Chamber met last night for the Oregon Trail Days, the first meeting of the year. We had 14 people in attendance, which was amazing, and had everybody report on what they're working on. We're gonna continue what was set up last year where we had the Rockin' Gym show up by the Quarry House and utilize the Quarry House. So we're hoping that Quarry House will be available again this year for it in some fashion. Pioneer Village will take place again, and Bob Hill's amazing. He's got 25. He's got two new exhibits coming that are pretty cool that are gonna happen. It'll be a surprise when he does that. Jody with the Tenano Community Service Center is the partner with the Chamber. She's managing our arts and crafts and our food vendors. And then the Lions Club is running the parade for us because we're underneath their insurance. So it's their running that. So we appreciate that Lions Club taking that responsibility on. And we're excited. And we also have an exciting news that there's going to be a talent competition on Sunday. Started off with a magic show by Jeff Evans, and then we'll have a talent competition. And Marcella Martinez with Don Juan's Restaurant is gonna be the coordinator for that. So we're excited to see that happen. And we're also looking for some other ideas, too. I wanted to talk to you, Mr. Mayor, about what Little Miss and Mr. Tenano was back in the day when you were chosen that. So maybe something we possibly bring back in the future as well. And then the EDC, the EDC meets next week. So you're on the board, so I haven't seen the packet yet for next week. And the Visitor and Convention Bureau, they got a new director back in August. Her name is Bets. She came from the Cascade Loop Association, which is a scenic byway. And she is contracted with a firm called OTAC. And OTAC has done these scenic byway corridor management plans. And those are things that you have to have in place in order to get first state recognition and then state funding and then federal recognition and federal funding. And so they're starting a process today. We had stakeholders coming together. Jessica was part of that as well. The mayor was on that. And people all the way from Yelm to Rochester were participating in that. We had a little survey going on. What do we think the intrinsic values of the scenic byway were? What were the key words were? What were the key destinations that we thought? And it was like this word graph coming up on it. So we're gonna take that information and formulate... The next meeting will be in May with them. You know, they'll formulate some more, ask some more questions. And then in the summer of that, so you're gonna come and drive the corridor when it's in the busiest of seasons to see what it looks like, where things could be worked on, and what other amenities need to be placed. Like, there may be public restrooms someplace or pull-offs or what other kinds of services are needed in that area. And then they'll wrap up the plan in the fall. And that plan will identify what are all the things that may be done and what are the potential funding sources to pay for them. That's a pretty exciting project that's coming with the Visitor and Convention Bureau. The Visitor and Convention Bureau is also working on some bike kiosk signage. There'll be signage about bicycling on the Bonafide Byway in Yelm and Rainier and in Tenano at the kiosk there at the entrance to the park. They're also working on one-pagers for each one of the cities in all of Thurston County. There'll be one page, two-sided, that has a brief description of what the community has to offer. Would be PDFs. They'll be downloadable on their website. And then they're also gonna create micro websites for each one of the communities. And ours will be experiencetenano.com, I believe, dot com. And so that'll be a micro site that has information about it that'll lead to the Chamber of Commerce's website for full details about Tenano. The Chamber also is working on, in partnership with Jessica at the Depot Museum, on combining three brochures into one. So we had the walking tour brochure with all the buildings and things on it. We had a visitor brochure by the Chamber. And then also the Tenano stone covers put together, a walking tour of some of the buildings and then some of the artwork that Keith has done. We're gonna combine those all into one brochure. It's gonna look like the Thurston Bonafide Byway map that folds up. And on inside will be all the history. On the outside will be some more history. And then it'll have all the visitor information center that we want people to have. And so we applied for a lodging tax, Thurston County Lodging Tax Grant, to help pay for that.
Excellent.
That's my report for three things.
Thank you, George. It's quite a bit of info. We also got a notice today from the STP Bicycle Rad for paying for their event permit, that the STP will be back on again after a two-year hiatus. So that's a lot of work for us, a big thing to prepare for. And it's a really cool event. So put that on your calendar, chief. Fire District 12.
No meeting yet.
Okay. Library, is Linda with us? I do not think so. Sometimes she joins in a little bit later. Museum, Jessica.
Hi, yeah. So just to give you an idea of, you know, how many people I've been having come in lately. Fridays are a little slow. I get a few visitors. But Saturdays lately have been pretty robust. I'm getting like anywhere between 10 to 20 visitors on a Saturday. Last Saturday, I had one family who came in and they spent about three hours. So I think between the park and the museum, we were able to keep the kids like happy and engaged for a really long time. So that was nice. Let's see, I've got several projects going. I'm continuing the inventory project. I'm working on a train timeline that will hang up in the train room. So it gives a better kind of overview of the train's influence on Tenano and South Thurston County. I've been researching the Tenano Independent Building for a variety of reasons. It changed hands. And on the walking tour, it kind of bothered me that it's called the Tenano Independent Building because all the other buildings have historic names. And this one doesn't. It has the name of the most recent thing that was there. So I was trying to find out if it actually was named something when it was built. I'm also been working, like George said, on the walking tour. We recently received a donation of some newspapers. So I'm gonna try and make room for those and make room for storage of other newspapers. I'm also working on a model train project. So right now, I'm probably putting in about 15 hours a week. I don't think there's going to be a Historical Society meeting in February. So just a heads up, if anybody was gonna come to that, I don't think we're gonna be able to put together a quorum because of various health concerns with different members. And then just my contract with the museum is actually up. So everything I'm doing right now is on a volunteer basis. So that's pretty much it, unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Jessica. At Tenano Community Service Center, Jody.
Um, we don't have a whole lot. We are still hosting the Vaccine Clinics. Robin Rudy Memorial Run will be on the 26th of March. We're geared up for that. We will be ending that run at the Eagles that day. That's it.
Thank you. Arch Commission. It's you again, George.
Again, Mayor, I have the five people lined up. I just need to get all their applications down and into you. So and then also meet with you and Kayleen about the implementing the ordinance.
Okay. Civil Service, I do not believe they have met, Facade Improvement Grant Review Committee. Linda, it's a new year. What's the plan on...
Haven't met yet, you know. I had the good old COVID for three weeks. And I finally got to go back to work yesterday after three weeks of not working. So as soon as I can, I'll put together a meeting because we do have some things that we need to hash out, so.
Okay, glad you're healthy. Planning Commission. Jen, the Planning Commission meets this next week, right?
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow, okay. Public Safety, Chief of Police.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This is your first meeting, right?
This is my first meeting.
So ladies and gentlemen, I believe many of you have already met him. But as our... At our first city council meeting with him, I'd like to welcome Chief Robert Otterer, who's been on the job a couple of weeks now. So he's here to give us a rundown, kind of first impression, tell us what he's up to, and introduce himself as well.
Okay, so I think I've met quite a few people. And the faces are small on the cameras here, but I'm recognizing a number of faces. And so far, so good. I'm really happy to be here, energetic and don't have any real formal talking points or numbers yet. But just kind of a general overview of some of the going-ons. I don't know if anyone heard about the potential unexploded ordinance call that we had. We had the Washington State Patrol Bomb Squad out. There was a citizen that was doing some digging in a house that was once owned by the quarry and found what appeared to be unexploded dynamite. So they brought the squad out and x-rayed it on site. Turned out it was not dynamite. So the homeowner was left with some cool old souvenirs. Still unknown what they were. Going through some staffing stuff right now. Some of it good, some of it potentially a challenge. We've got one officer in the police academy right now. He's doing very well. He's in Week Four. Passed all of his first battery of tests. He'll be fully certified in about five months. We've got one provisional officer currently in background investigations right now. I got an initial report from his background investigator. And I moved him on to the next step, which is gonna be some further interviews with former employers and family. Then he'll be moved on. If he successfully completes that, he'll be moved on to polygraph and psychological evaluation. We have one current officer that's got some feelers out. Maybe we might be losing one. So that'll put us at a net zero. So we'll still be at current staffing levels. Had a really good meeting with Mr. Endicott, the superintendent of schools, regarding our school resource officer program. We have, I don't know if everyone knows this, but we have a fully certified school resource officer, somebody who's been through the National Association of School Resource Officers Training. In 2017, we had, the city had an agreement with the schools as to what we were to provide, what type of services. Well, that hasn't been visited since 2017. So obviously, the amount of compensation that the school is providing for us is gonna be changing and probably for the better for us. And it was a really positive meeting with Mr. Endicott. We don't know what that number is yet. By the end of this week, I should have a rough draft of an agreement ready for the mayor to take a peek at. And then if it passes muster, it would go through the process of attorneys looking at it. I am imagining within the next couple of weeks, Mr. Mayor and I will be sitting down and putting some pens to paper and finding some common goals and getting a clear direction on what he wants to see with our agency and what my suggestions are. Some of the cursory things that I've been working on are training. I've got a plan to put all of our officers into neighboring agencies in-service training to make sure they're current with all of the new updates to all of the laws and initiatives that were passed governing law enforcement now. As everyone knows, or if you didn't, I come from a commercial motor vehicle enforcement background of the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration. So I've reached out to some of my partners in the FMCSA to potentially get some commercial motor vehicle enforcement going on in the city at some point in time. Nothing hammered out yet, but hopefully in the future. And also, I've got some very deep connections with the Seattle Police Department of their training program. And I'm looking at the implementation of some bicycles for the summer months for some of the festivals that we have and getting officers out there on bikes in the community. So that's what I got for three weeks in. And as I present more at the meetings, we'll have better numbers and a more clear direction as to where we're going.
All right, thank you, chief. Does anybody have any questions for Chief Otterer? Okay, we are just about done with our... Well, we got about three minutes left. We probably knock out Troy's report. Troy, would you like to do the public works report before 7:30?
Hey, I was running some numbers. We use 384 ERUs is what we use. So we have 1,012 total.
We currently use 384 with the CS is. We have 327 ERUs available. So, you know, if anybody has any questions or concerns about our water reserves and our banked capacity and available water, we have twice as... We have almost twice as much available as we use.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So I'll move on to, we're planning on, I'm scheduling either next week or the week after, of starting to move the playground toys in the park up front. Me and Wayne went to the park, kind of walked around and looked at things and came up with a pretty good plan about moving the toys up front and leaving some area where if we ever do end up getting some newer toys, we can combine the toys and closer to the parking lot.
Away from trees that cause the damage.
Trees, exactly. So, but I think that, yeah, do you want to talk a little bit about the pump track, too? I mean, we talked about putting that in the park. And I think, honestly, I think that's the best idea for it. It's next to the bathroom. It's got lights back there, so if kids allow.
Moving the toys up towards the parking lot, we feel that it's gonna create a new space in the park area that will be really perfect for the pump track.
Yes, correct. So that's in the works. So that hopefully will be done before, you know, the end of March. And so the toys will be open for people, for the kids. We've been working. We did a water tap today. We did some hydrant testing this week. So yeah, next week, we're gonna finish up on the Quarry House ramp. We did some re-manufacturing. re-manufacturing some or put some new boards down and and making that sturdier. Getting it prepared for construction and for future use.
All right, well, it's at seven thirty, so we got to start the official meeting and then we'll we'll hop back into your council report. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to end the work session and we'll immediately go into the Tuesday, February eighth, Tenino City Council meeting. Let the record show that all council members are present. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. All right, thank you. We have an agenda before us needing approval.
Removed.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We have minutes before us needing approval for the one twenty-five twenty-two meeting.
Removed.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. That brings us the consent calendar. January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two through February twenty-twenty-two, payroll EFTs in the amount of forty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars, twenty-six cents. Claims checks number three, zero, three, seven, eight through three, zero, four, one, zero, and EFTs in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and nine cents for a grand total of one hundred and thirty-four dollars, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty-five cents with no liquor or cannabis licenses. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Removed. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. We have no executive session, no presentations. That brings us to public comments. If there is anyone in the audience that is a member of the public that would like to provide public comment, now is your time to do so. You'll be given three minutes. Please state your name and home address. If you'd like to provide public comment, open up your mic and just let us know. Going once, going twice, moving on. Thank you. No proclamations. Old business, non-new business. This is amendment to the quarry pool renovation project. Before we make any motions on it, we have Mike Marshall with us tonight. If you would like to provide any commentary to the amendment.
Sure, yeah, Mike Marshall Gibson Olsen. And this is a change order for work of Pacific pools who got the bid for phase one. And phase one was pretty much the second part of the pool up against the wall. And what this does is this includes phase two. So instead of as you, as you're facing the wall, there's a step there and that would go away. And that area would be filled in. It would have what's called a zero entry. So it'll be ramped down to what now is phase one. So it includes rejoining the hole, kids' pool, and this also includes the the water features, the splash pad and the fountains.
So this is this adding phase two, and I'll explain why we feel it's prudent to do it at this time. It is outside the funds that were granted to us through the CDBG funds that we got to do this project. So it's a it's a little extra money, but if we do it now, it's going to do it right and it's going to save costs because it's it's easier for them to include these things while they've got everything, everything tore up. So we want to complete it. Our Plan A for the funding is this is our cycle for being of being able to get money from the CDBG grant program. So that'll be the first place I go and and I I fairly confident that we can get those funds. Plan B, if not enough of the CDBG funds are made available, this is where we would be right now committing rest of those those recovery, American Recovery Plan Act funds that we'll be getting in in June, the extra like two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we're getting in June. So the money's there. We have plans to get it from CDBG. Fallback is the ARPA funds. And so that's where we're at.
Looking for an approval?
Yeah, we need a motion to authorize the approve the amendment and allow me to sign it.
That just sounded like Wayne. Make it so.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion or questions for Mike Marshall? And then, and Mike, what is the, what is our timeline looking at? Look at Mike?
We're still hoping to be up in July by fourth of July weekend. That's the plan.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there's no further discussion, I will call for the question. All those in favor?
All right.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next up, resolutions. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero two, Resilience City Council, amending resolution twenty nineteen dash zero one, City of Tenino Official Handbook. This is resolution twenty nineteen, establishing the City of Tenino Official Handbook was duly adopted by the City Council, City of Tenino, May twenty, twenty nineteen. Both this City of Tenino City Official Handbook, both federal and state law changed since twenty nineteen. City Council are aware. So if it needs to be revised as necessary, keep going down in accordance. Non-exempt regular full-time employees will be paid an additional one-half times the regular rate of pay for any additional time worked on a holiday. Keep going down. So Kayleen's microphone is not working, so I would typically give her the opportunity to provide comment on the resolution. As you say, confirm your mic's still not working, Kayleen? Okay. All right, so this is an attempt to clean up some of the language in the personnel policy book. We talked about some of the pay issues and we've given council the opportunity to read over this resolution. Do we have any questions? Hearing no questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That concludes the official business and brings us back into reports. Mr. Troy Cannon, would you like to complete your report?
Yeah, I'm back. Uh, where was it? Anyway, um, sorry, I got six things going on behind us, but uh, I talked about the toys a little bit. Trying to think what else we got going on. That's a really big project for us, but the toys are probably number one. Today we have a water leak out at the East Sussex, which was, it's it's been having issues for the last five years. And so I think it's time that we look into replacing that water line. We have money in the budget to have that done by an outside contractor because I just don't think we have time as the city public works. So I might look into talking to Mike Marshall about some engineering stuff there, but also looking into having contractors come out and replace that line. It's, it's needed to be done for quite a while. So, but other than that, the wastewater treatment plants running, going somewhat efficiently. The, we're still taking septic receiving. We we close them off Fridays. We don't have anyone dump Fridays so we can do maintenance on the screen and the grid chamber, so. Until, until we get a little more volume in the ponds, then we'll keep going Fridays. But for now, we're closed on Fridays. We're septic receiving. Other than that, that's, that's it. Unless somebody has any questions for me.
Ritter Street. Do we have a timeline on Ritter Street?
Uh, okay, so Ritter Street, we're still trying to get acquisition, some property there that the housing authority that the apartment complex owns there to make, I mean, it's not going to break us if we don't get the property, but the engineers are still trying to get a chunk of property down by Park and Ritter. It just would help out the design part of it. So they're still trying to get here back from the the housing authority to see if they would either sell it or what we can do there. So I saw an email go through last week with some questions they had for the engineers. And so that that that's in the works. As soon as that's done, the engineering and everything's done, engineering, the water line's done. So that could go out to bid. I wish Mike Marshall would have stayed on. He could have filled you in a little bit more on that. But that's what that's the holdup is right now is the property acquisition or somehow or another getting an easement down through there so we can use that road. So you know, the sewer line is right on the property line, our sewer main. When they put that in, I don't know if the survey company messed up or what happened there, but the sewer line is kind of in approaching on their property. So, yes, it's not, it's not a good thing, but we're getting her worked out. So hopefully by, you know, March, it will go out to bid and then construction can start the April, May would be nice to get her done.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Troy. Any questions for Public Works Director? All right, thank you. City Planning Building Official. Is Rainy with us? There's Rhonda. It's not raining. Um, I do not think so. Okay, moving on. City Attorney not present. Clerk Treasurer can't speak. Mayor. So we have had, we've been working on the City Hall renovations. Some stuff came up where some of the so we got our initial contract came in with the construction company, about a hundred thousand under what was granted. That gave us plenty of, plenty of room to, you know, make, you know, do some additional changes, you know, account for the, you know, the cost, the increased cost of construction materials, which is, which has really hit us hard. And, you know, we've, it has, the costs have gone up and it's been fine. We've accounted for that. We we felt like we're going to, in a good place. We got, you know, it wasn't kind of blindsided, but the the construction company themselves, they feel they got kind of blindsided by one of their subs who came in about twice as much as they want. It was the masons, which is, you know, a really important part of the renovations for City Hall. So the masons came in, cost about twice as much as anticipated. A couple of other little things have driven the costs up a little bit more. So we, our initial grant was for five hundred thousand. We're looking at, we're going to come in around five thirty, five hundred and thirty thousand to complete the project. Mike Marshall, in his talks with Department of Commerce, they said, yeah, we we always expect about fifteen percent over. That puts us right in that range. So we are getting a narrative from the contractor that explains how their costs have increased due to, you know, various circumstances, shipping delays, you know, material costs increase. We take that narrative, we put it into our own package and then we send that to Department of Commerce and say, hey, please re-release an additional thirty thousand to cover these additional costs. And they, Commerce has already told us that they would expect that kind of thing. So we're not, we're not worried. We're, we're finishing it up. Every, just about everything is done except for the front office, some flooring and cabinets in the back upstairs, pretty much fully completed except for a couple of little things. And then, and then in the, the, I guess it would be the the north side of the building is pretty much all buttoned up. Thursday bids go, the bid package goes out for the quarry house building. And we'll be looking at Troy just informed us that Bob Nelson won the Eagles jackpot of twelve thousand dollars. So congratulations, Bob. You can put that in the newspaper, Mr. Fisher. So that that bid is going out for the quarry house and we'll hopefully be starting the work on that very soon. That one should go pretty quickly. The roof is good. A lot of it is just going to be interior work and then we're going to try and try and put as much time and money into renovating the kitchen and the quarry house as possible because we want to get a truly functional commercial kitchen so that the seniors' meals on wheels can can utilize it better. That has been most of what I've been up to. Be that.
Their next meeting is on the twenty-first of this month.
CIP. I don't think anybody's officially been added to that. Solid Waste Advisory Board. I believe that is Elaine. I don't know, have you guys met yet?
No, I haven't heard anything from anybody.
Okay, Steady.
Steady's going to meet next week and it's on Friday and it's going to be a Zoom meeting this time. And we've asked Mark Daley from TRPC to come and give a deep dive into how TRPC is serving South County.
Excellent, thank you. Tenino School Board, Rachel.
Their next meeting is going to be on the twenty-eighth, but the boys and girls varsity basketball is going to the playoffs. So Thursday, the boys play away, but this Friday, the girls play home and it'll be at six o'clock. So if you see them in town, wish them well and let's see how they do. They're pretty good. I'm excited. The girls, I can't wait to see it. So they do have the COVID restrictions still, so unfortunately, it's not open to the public to come in and see the girls play this Friday, but I'll definitely be there cheering for everybody else.
Awesome, thank you. TRPC?
We just had a bunch of presentations. One of them was on of interest for us is going over the bicycle paths. The actual plans are something like almost twenty years old, so they're going to dust that off, go through, renovate it, make sure that everything is up to date. And and we have new officers. I don't, I don't have their names. And that's pretty much it. It was a long meeting, but and, you know, it's just that this time of year for for TRPC and TPB is almost like going through one-on-one for all the new members. You think we, if all the different steps and all the different monies and how how we go for all that different stuff is re-explained each year so that everybody understands what's going on and where where the possibilities are getting projects taken care of. And again, that was basically what we did on TRPC and I'll be sending you the after-meeting report as soon as we get it.
Thanks, sir. TPB?
That's tomorrow morning and it's, it's again the same thing, which brings up a point. Mr. Mayor, you may want to get ahold of Solid Waste to find out why Elaine hasn't received any information yet because all the other committees have already got their permanent people on there and the information has gone out for everyone.
Okay, we'll, we'll have staff reach out to Solid Waste and and make sure that they've got Elaine's contact info. Thank you.
Thank you.
Librarian. There you are.
Here I am. Hello, everyone. Just two real quick announcements. The first is that the Hawks Prairie Library location is opening on February eighteenth, a little bit delayed because of some work that took a little bit longer than was planned. But that is an exciting development, especially for people from that side of Lacey. And then the other thing was, I just wanted to mention, we're celebrating Black History Month at the library today. Um, and then the other thing was I just wanted to mention, we're celebrating uh, Black History Month at the library today. Or not today, this month. And uh, we have a display of some um, interesting materials. So if you're at the library, please take a look. And just to mention that this is part of a larger um, plan of celebrations uh, of different cultures and different um, uh, groups within, you know, within the United States, uh, as part of the library's um, equity, diversity and inclusion um, initiative. So uh, look for different topics every month and we hope you can stop by.
Excellent. Thank you, librarian Kenny. Uh, that brings us to public comment period number two. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to provide public comment, now is your second opportunity to do so and we'd love to hear from you. Uh, just turn on your microphone, let us know, state your name and address and you'll have three minutes to say whatever you'd like. Going once, going twice. Moving on. Announcements. Mr. O'Callahan, it's your moment. This is your time to shine.
Okay, here we go.
September, the uh, first responder Pollock barbecue will be in September.
September tenth.
September tenth.
Yep, over at the park. Uh, the second thing that I wanted to bring up is I think I mentioned at our last meeting that the uh, fire, that the commissioners, the Thurston County Fire Commissioners are thinking about having a fireman's ball. Uh, the proceeds will be for a charity. My particular charity would be uh, to keep the money here local and use it as scholarship funds for families, uh, for children of the firefighters, that kind of stuff. But we haven't discussed that. Uh, I've already reached out and I have a place if, if we do move forward with this. We have a venue and we also have alcohol for it. And I'm pretty sure I've got food, but I haven't gotten that far. Uh, as things progress and I look at it maybe in a two, not this year, maybe next year. So it's about two years down the road, but that's what we're looking at doing. Uh, to better support all of the firefighters in Thurston County and uh, to get us all better recognition, get people to know who we are a lot better.
Cool idea. Any other announcements?
Well, I, I um, I look, I've been working on legislative liaison things for the um,
We need to add that to our reports.
Yes, we do, because I, I, I picked out two bills that are bipartisan supported that are going to help our law enforcement. Um, one is seventeen nineteen, the other is seventeen thirty-five, and they have to do with uh, uh, equipment. And seventeen thirty-five is expands peace officers authority to use physical force, modifies the requirement to exercise reasonable care. So they're trying to fix the legislation that passed last year that tied the hands of all of our police officers. So I just wanted to especially let our chief know that these things might be coming down the pipe because the one bill was ninety-five to nothing in the House, the other was ninety to five. So they're very, they're supported by both sides of the um, uh, Democrats and the Republicans. So they should, they should pass and, and help out a little bit anyway.
Okay. Thank you, Linda. Uh, and uh, staff, please note that we would, we need to add to reports legislative liaison and then city planner and building official. Let's make those two different reports instead of city planner slash building official. So if you guys, please uh, take note of that. Any other announcements? Hearing none, uh, we move to adjourn.
None debatable motion. Y'all have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
You have a good night.